Gloves Off is always on point. Bringing you the best on current issues, community affairs, and the happenings around us. This segment of Gloves Off is brought to you by the best, so pay them a visit, check 'em out. This is Gloves Off.
Well, 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 well. You're listening to Gloves Off with Professor Mutron. All right then, I'm gonna say words on point, straight forward, no jibber jabber, everybody forward. Issues, facts, and solution, get it at Gloves Off with Professor Mutron. All right, what a day is a revolution, get it on point with Professor Mutron. Gloves Off, no nonsense issues, politics, community, a better man for Laredo. Gloves Off, a revolutionary show, with everything that you need to know with Professor Mutron. Watch ya!
Gloves Off, and today I have a great guest, Commissioner John G. Holden.
Oh, good, well, Paul?
How's everything?
Well, it's good, everything's good right now.
You know, we've, you've done a lot, so we're gonna be touching base on a couple of things that are coming up, and I think that, you know, that the way the wave is moving, I think that you're, you're standing strong. You're standing strong.
Appreciate that, you know, we're, you know, we're moving forward with our campaign, uh, I think, you know, asking for one more term to go this, and, um, we're getting a lot done at the county, I think we're in very, very good shape, moving forward, but, uh, so we'd like to see that continue.
And I think it, I think it will, I think, um, I think the wave is going in a different direction, and I think in fact, we've been hit a couple, with a couple of good, strong tides, you know, and, uh, the last one, I would think, would be, uh, this landfill issue, you know, interchanged, and then all of a sudden, it's still going through, and now, all of a sudden, now we're coming in with what you stood up for yesterday, and no, it was a, um, no, we're not gonna join a lawsuit against the wall. Can you kind of elaborate on everything that I'm?
Well, you know, um, the problem was that the county asked us to support, to support an amicus brief, or to write an amicus brief and support it, and I'm not sure if it was the RGISC's lawsuit, or they intervened in another one, but they hadn't provided us any documentation, so I said, you know, "I'm not putting my name or my vote to anything I haven't read or seen," you know, it's, and, you know, I asked the question, "Have anybody seen this?" And everybody's just shaking their head, "No," and, you know, and we liked the idea, and I was like, "Hmm, I'm not sure about the idea," and I said, "You know, what is it about?" From, they finally sent me the documentations afterwards, but again, I voted no because I had not seen it, I said, "Well, you know, what it is, or, you know, I'm not gonna join a lawsuit that, you know, we either, we don't have a chance to win, or we don't have any standing, or whatever it may be," you know, 'cause it costs you money, you know, and come back and bite you, but, uh, not only that, that's when, you know, making sure that we were gonna do it locally, not get, you know, our high-powered Austin attorneys on it, um, and so, I really don't know what, you know, it brought to the table for them, other than, you know, saying, "Okay, we got our local representatives," you know, officials saying that they're against it too, but, from what I understand, uh, she, uh, they put in the text saying that the president has the authority to declare an emergency, but in their opinion, it's not an emergency. So, it's kinda strange, is it, is it the president's authority, or is it us as individuals? You know, can we just say, "No, we don't think it's an emergency, we don't qualify," or, "This should be an emergency, can we make it an emergency?" And so, you know, I see it very difficult, and I think the court, some of the courts have already affirmed this, now, you always can, you'll find judges that go both ways all the time, you know, so, uh, you know, no doubt it's gonna go to the Supreme Court, and there's gonna be more briefs and more briefs, and, you know, asked, and so, I think it could be a expensive venture, and from what I've seen, again, we're, you know, I'm asking my legal people that I have, you know, that I know, and, um, it doesn't look like there's really much there, except saying questioning or challenging the president's declaration of emergency. You know, if I do it like what we do on council, you know, we can, we can allocate the monies, and once it's, you know, we give it to the sheriff's office, you know, he's got it within his budget, he can move the monies around, obviously, you know, there's budget amendments, but, you know, it would take a vote by us to rescind that money, and so, it would be the same thing for Congress. Congress could actually vote and rescind the money, but they haven't, so it's still within his budget, so he can move that money around. So, um, you know, there's been a long debate, I don't like the idea of the wall, it's here anyway, I think, you know, maybe Arizona, California, those places definitely need it, I mean, where you just have, you know, it's open desert, and you have no demarcation, line of demarcation, it's just, you know, hey, you step over, you can be on both sides of the country, you can be on both countries at the same time, you know, that's something that is, but here, you know, from putting it somewhere along the river, is it gonna be 100 yards from the riverbank, is it gonna be a mile from the riverbank? Where's it gonna be, um, is it going to, from what I understand, it's not compensating the landowner for the property that's left on the other side of the wall, just the actual right-of-way? You know, so you wanna go down, and you have whatever it is, crops, or fields, or hunting down there, and you're on the other side of the wall, are there gonna be gates? How often are there gonna be gates? You know, none of these questions have been answered, so, there's a lot of ambiguity, there's a lot of, you know, lack of information out there, what's going on, but the irony of the thing is, basically, I believe it's the same group who came and fought the eradication of the carizo cane, and the Border Patrol has told me time and time again, I don't know about the present administration, but, uh, the past administration, saying they didn't believe they needed the wall in this area, because all they need is the eradication of the carizo cane, whether it's chemically, and I know there's people opposed to that, or mechanically, and then they wanted an access road because the Border Patrol agents don't have, you know, it takes them, you know, you go upstream, and it's hours to get to some places, you know, for an agent, you know, an agent be down, and another agent couldn't get there, you know, in time, and so, they were always worried about that. But they fought the eradication of the cane, they fought, and they fought the river access road because of erosion, or whatever else, and, you know, and the carizo cane's not even native species, it's an invasive species from India, from what I understand, and, uh, so, it seems like they brought this on us, and it's, you know, like you say, all these things that we do have, you know, your unintended consequences or have ramifications, and so, that's why I'm saying, you know, there was no rush for that vote the other day. We could've stepped back and said, "Let's look at this thing, let's look at all the documentation, what is it that we're putting our name to?" And maybe I would've signed it, you know, but, uh, you know, they didn't allow us that opportunity, and so, with that, I have to say no.
Absolutely, and I think you have many people that are in agreement with your vote, because it needs to be done. The wall is a touchy subject, do we need a wall in some places, for sure? Do we need a definite, uh, wall or fence, if you wanna put it that way? In some areas here in Webb County, in some, yes, we do, but, um, you know, I'm like this, if it's gonna stop one kid from getting drugs from the drugs that's coming across, then it's put up two walls, you know what I'm saying? But then all of a sudden, you have the group that says, "The drugs come through a port of entry." Then if you're saying that the ports of entry, then we're saying that we have individuals in a port of entry that are doing the drugs for allowing drugs to pass through, so what is? No, you know what I'm saying, so there's a lot of eaves and gluts. Is a wall gonna happen? He's not the first president that allowed the wall, you know, you had Clinton, you had Bush, and Obama, and then, then you had, you have Trump, and they've all agreed for the wall, they've all tried with the wall. It has to be done at one point in time. Strategically wise, militarily wise, I think that, I think that's how it's gonna be bypassed, that's just an opinion, but other than that, um, you kind of, you touch on something that's kind of interesting. It's the same group that went after the carizo, opposed it, and now going after this. What are they in there for? You know, that's when you start thinking, are they really for the safety of our community, or what are they there for? You know what I'm saying? You start, you start to wonder, when, um, it's kinda like if you know there's a thief in the neighborhood. Okay? So you put the burglar bars.
Yeah, I mean, we all protect our houses.
You know what I'm saying? And that's just the way it is, you know, and you trim the bushes that are around the, the burglar bars, and that's the end of the story, or you put, you reinforce with that, but that's a different thing. Now, number one, let's change the subject a little bit. Uh, what do you foresee with, with Webb County doing in the near future? I know that there was some talk about lifedowns.
Well, we just had a very important vote, um, we approved an architect, well, I say we, we had an architect onboard, we're waiting, we were, you know, negotiating the numbers. For my case, you know, it wasn't my first choice, uh, there was the same people that did the master plan, I didn't think they did a very good job on the master plan, they didn't address the egress and ingress, uh, they didn't address a lot of things, so basically, just kind of rubber stamped it, pulled up, Corpus Christi Fairgrounds, put it on the property that we currently have, you know, moved a few buildings around. You know, with governmental agencies, these people are just used to just kinda running roughshod over them and getting, you know, 10, 12 percent straight off the bat, without a blink of an eye, you know, and most, I think, commissioners' courts and city officials don't, don't even think about it, 'cause it's not our money, it's taxpayer money, and, you know, they quoted this thing at $90 million for the complete build-out, which I can't, I don't see it myself, I don't see it being that high, I think we can do it for much less, and you gotta remember, these are metal buildings, they're basically warehouses, you know, and now you can dress them up, and for the most part, they have nothing inside, there's no special details, uh, you know, drains, and, you know, water, make sure you have all the things to process the animals, or have, you know, where it's a multipurpose facility, volleyball courts, basketball courts, you know, those type of things, open-air events that are gonna be indoor, so it's just a big empty shell. Now, there was the, what they call the equestrian center, uh, which was the biggest ticket item there, and, um, the architects, of course, are pushing that because it's money for their pocket. I mean, that's a, I think it was a $40 million price tag on that, on that building. That's the one thing I can't, you know, I don't have any current numbers, you know, I used to be in the construction business, so I know what a lot of these things do, and I was on the committee that helped build the LEA, so I remember a lot of those things going on, and what it encompasses, but, uh, you know, I think Webb County could stand, you know, maybe $30 million, I don't wanna push it more than that, I know there's a lot of maybe letting of bonds out for $50 million. I feel very uncomfortable doing that much, you know, we've worked very hard, and I think this court has worked very hard to make sure that Webb County's in financial, you know, financially good shape, and we are, we're in very good shape right now. We have ingresses over revenues, over expenses, um, it seems to have gotten our health insurance under control, and we can talk about that later, but, you know, this is a quality of life issue, we need to do this, I mean, it's, you know, it was an ISO for so long out there, and there's so many kids that go through that thing, I mean, it's thousands and thousands of kids, plus, you know, all the other concerts and events, and, you know, the Little Bowl, or whatever, Jalapeno Festival, you know, the Life Fair, exposition, all those type of things, and I'd sure like to see a lot more new events, you know, motocross, or monster trucks, or something where you can have the big open space and be able to do things, X Games, whatever it may be, I'd really like to see some kind of, an entry-level Can-Am racing, you know, that's the four-wheelers, like the razors and things like that, that is something that I think, uh, there's quite a bit of population in, in Nuevo Laredo, I think we could get a sanctioned race here, it's a dirt track, you know, you just kinda, not an oval, but it's, you know, S, or whatever they call it, Z, Z shape, uh, but it does take some, um, infrastructure, you know, a lot of tires, which are readily available around here, um, you know, safety barricades and things, your pit area, all those type of things, but that is something I think that the local population could get involved in, because, you know, there's quite a few people that have four-wheelers, it doesn't take much to soup them up, change, you know, the suspensions and things like that, they're already doing that, you know, now they really come off the shelf, you know, some of these things go 90 miles an hour off the shelf, and so, you know, you could have the different levels, and like I say, I think we could be a draw for that. You know, I don't know how many races you could have a year, two, four, whatever it may be, but that fairgrounds is something I think that we owe our, uh, our children here, you know, we owe our families to be able to, be able to go out there and enjoy it. I really would like to see the city join us, you know, there is a building proposed on there, what we call a multipurpose, basically, it's a civic center, you know, um, they have it right now at about 20,000 square feet, that's what the old one was, and I remember it was already getting too small for a lot of events, you know, body needs to be about 30,000 square feet, the way they had this one designed is a lot like those, uh, your big convention centers in Vegas, where you have these big curtains you can close, and split, you know, split the building in half, or, you know, whatever it is, breakout rooms, but the city's looking for a civic center, so we proposed to them, "Hey, come build it out here, you know, we got the land, we're not gonna charge you for the land, let's, you know, help us, you've got the monies, right, build this building, let's use it, let's get people coming in there and using it." And so, you know, there's still that push to maybe be downtown, um, I liked what they had proposed there at, uh, there by La Posada, you know, that convention center, but that was a very small, that was not a civic center.
Yeah, it was like a meeting.
Yeah, you know, a meeting area, and I think that it was like 16,000, so that wouldn't have done anything that the old civic center had in there, so I think you could do both, um, things like that, it's just, you know, like I say, we're going, but, uh, I applaud my Wowie, 'cause she stood firm, these guys were asking, the architects were asking for 8 percent of the whole project, and then a 2 percent oversight. Now, architects normally have, you know, the oversights is included in there, they're supposed to look over what their work, the way they drew it, and she told them, you know, "8 still on the high side, you know, you got, I think, 12 million of the total pack goes to like parking lots, you know, that's normally like 2 percent." So, I said, "All right, we'll make a compromise, we'll give you 8 percent, period, and you still gotta do everything." And like I said, that's probably reasonable, you know, so I voted for that, I think, you know, uh, there was some talk about, "Well, if we delay it, you know, it may cost us more," and I think we could go to the next architect and get a project, I mean, a contract done. Everything's written out already, so it's just a matter of, you gonna sign on the dotted line, yes or no? So I don't think there'd be much delay if we had to skip to the next one, and so, you know, that's it. Now, moving forward, we talked in the book about healthcare real quick, and, um...
What's going on with the healthcare?
We had a good year, we had a good year, the commissioner's court had to take some drastic action, the county had been putting, you know, basically, $3 million supplementing every year, every year, and so, you know, we got with our actuaries, we got with the head now, we got the people, and said, "All right, you know, everybody's got skin in the game." We did, uh, Alex Solis did a, when she was working for us, did a fantastic job of pointing there and making the employees aware that they had choices, and the choices they were making were actually costing all of us money, so it was just basically an awareness program, and got them to buy in, and so they're shopping now for their prescription drugs, they're shopping now, they're saying, "All right, so and so, these doctors are in, you know, in system, these other ones are out," so, uh, we're trying to make as many of them available as possible, but there was some doctors that were, you know, abusing us, you know, just charging outrageous amount for a blood panel and things like that, so, we just started looking at these trends and started cutting back, and so, we actually saved money this year, we had a surplus, due to our employees, like I say, shopping around and doing, listening, and saying, you know, "Hey, can I pay a $1,500 MRI, or I can get it for $700?" You know? So those type of choices, so we turned around, we have a, our consultant presented some new numbers, he tweaked what we call the tiers, you know, the family package, or the spouse, your husband, I mean, employee and spouse, and, uh, so we made some of those tiers more inviting, and so, we're gonna see, uh, lowered the rates, see what they, now, we only lowered the rate for the employee, of course, the county, I think, we're getting about $2 million from employee contribution, $10 million from the county, so it's still quite a burden on the county, but I think, like I say, if this works, hopefully, we've stopped that upward trend, it's actually peaked, and now we're kinda coming back down, and so, that's good news for us, good news for the taxpayer, good news for the employee.
And the employees are happy, aren't they?
Well, they're never happy, nobody wants to pay, you know, they want 100 percent of insurance, but, uh, you know, it's gonna, it gives us some options, uh, you know, we're talking about wellness centers, talking about, uh, you know, making sure that our employees, 'cause a lot of them, you know, don't take the normal annual physical, you know, you know, if we catch these things early, you know, catch them in the pre-diabetes, before they're full-blown diabetes, you know, catch them in the, you know, catch them and put them on Crestor before they have the clogged arteries and need the bypasses, all those type of things, you know, if we just gotta, you know, basically, hold their hand, take them, and say, "Okay, guys, you know, you need to run your tests, you need to go do your labs, annual basis, do a physical," and most of them, 'cause they don't have their own doctor, you know, most people don't have a doctor, you know, so they, you know, always go onto the emergency room, you know, whenever they're sick, they just go to the emergency room, and that's it, and that's maybe twice a year, you know, but we need to get these people a doctor, so we're talking about, you know, maybe working with the city, trying to do it different plans, seeing how can we get these people on a plan to make sure that they don't hit the big bills, you know?
Yeah, and could you make it mandatory? Can you say, "You know what, in such and such, you have to take it for this year?"
I don't know, you know, those are all options. Yeah, I understand, and like I say, "Hey, you know, you need to go take your physical."
But you're all our employees of the county, you guys have to do this, this, and this, you know? I don't know if it's, if it goes against any employee.
Yeah, well, you know, you got all kinds of HIPAA rules.
You know what I'm saying, so?
You know, the Affordable Care Act rules are out there, and so, they kinda govern, you know, when you do it in medical care, it's a different animal, and it's very hard to understand.
Absolutely. What else have you seen, or what else do you see in the next year, two years that's coming of age that's gonna be another issue?
Oh, I know we've talked about so many things, and, you know, they kinda all run together, but, uh, like I say, right now, you know, it was a good year, I'm worried a little bit about next year, you know, the oil and gas prices, and especially gas, which, you know, the county, um, produces quite a bit of, I don't remember what number we are, we used to fluctuate between 1 and 2 all the time, and, of course, now, in, uh, the Permian Basin, they're just producing gobs of oil and gas over there, so it's really destroying the price, but our valuations in the oil and gas industry are gonna go down, because last year, when they did the valuations, the December was actually a peak, so, it's trending, we're like almost half the price of last year, and what the taxpayers don't realize is that that's a big subsidy to the county, you know, so that's been subsidizing these rates for the longest time, the mineral valuations, and so, that can, could be cut in half. Now, we just had this new tax law, it was supposedly property tax reform law, which is, it's not property tax, it's not property tax reform, it's just reform for the county and the city, the entities, about how much money they can receive, so, people are under the, under the exception, say, "My property can't go up more than," I think the, it's 3.5 percent. No, your property can go up 10 percent, if it's your homestead, it's got a cap of 10 percent, but your business here, they can just say, "Hey, it went up 20 percent, too bad." Now, when you look at the whole total, you know, saying, "Okay, you know what, mineral valuations went down, the whole total income of Webb County is, say, revenue neutral, but your property tax is still went up 20 percent, you still get charged 20 percent, you're not capped at 3.5, it's a cap on the total amount received, not a cap on the individual," so people don't understand that, and, uh, so that's...
That's gonna be, that's where you're gonna get a bunch of people that, that are gonna catch them off-guard.
Yeah, and they're gonna be very upset next year if their property values go up, and they don't see a decrease. Now, you made, like I say, "Okay, the county is limited, basically, let's just say we're right at $100 million, so we're limited to go to 3, you know, 103 million, 103, 35, well, uh, maybe we get, the new revenue is $5 million, so we have to cut it down a main half, maybe you go from your 20 percent down to 18, 17, 16 percent, but, uh, the ones who are really gonna get the benefit are the guys, you know, the, the gas people, 'cause they're the ones that, they get the full benefit."
Understood.
So, like I say, we, it's hard to explain to the individual, and I see it out, you know, on the Facebook all the time, they're arguing this and that, you raised your property, so we're not raising anything. Webb County property taxes did exactly the same. I said, "But I cannot, uh, tell you what your individual property did." I know that, you know, we're protesting at my personal office, 'cause it went up like 15 percent, and I was like, "From where, guys?" You know, rents are down, you're seeing places open, you know, up and down Delmar Boulevard, and I think you're starting to see a little bit overbuilt on the retail space, and, uh, you know, so...
Yeah, I think retail here... I think we're gonna go down, you're gonna start seeing a lot of, a lot of more empty spaces everywhere. People do not wanna lower the rent and have these places filled, instead, they're gonna, they're gonna keep them the same and take that loss, I guess that's good or bad, I don't know, but you're gonna start seeing a lot more empty spaces in the near future.
Well, I think, you know, just Amazon, just Amazon alone, you know, is probably affecting a lot, especially the mom-and-pop show, you know, and so, if you're not having a professional that provides a service fill that space, it's difficult, you know, if you got a retail space that's, you know, selling clothes, or furniture, or whatever it may be, you know, you gotta compete with not only the Amazon, but these big box stores, and so, it's very, very tough.
Absolutely, and that's, and that's, you're gonna start seeing a lot, a lot more stores close because of Amazon.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's just...
Not not because of Amazon, you're gonna start seeing, in general, because a lot of people are gonna start buying, you know...
Well, it's all convenient.
It's a lot convenient, you know, I don't know...
It's not always cheaper, but it's convenient.
I don't, and I think that's what people want, they want the convenience, they're, they can spend $5 more if it's convenient.
Yeah.
They're not gonna go out of their way 10 miles to get, get $3 off something, they're really saying, "You know what?"
Now, I know people that will.
You know, the same way, you know, but, but, you know what I'm saying, and I think it's gonna affect a lot of our stores downtown, I think, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna get hit pretty bad in the near future.
After I already did that, I think, you know, it's pretty, pretty much killed everything downtown, you know, everything that you used to buy here is available in Mexico now, almost, so, there's very little, I guess, you know, whatever they can trade here, you know, and so, you know, but you're seeing the revitalization, we're, we're working on, um, the new, you know, the old HEB building, so, Sheriff's Office now, there was some surprises on Monday, 'cause for me, it was always the sheriff going in there in the tax assessor collector, we were looking at the, uh, parking lot next door, and now the city wants to buy that parking lot too, so we were looking at doing a joint venture, um, there was some mention of changing that on Monday, so it kinda caught me off-guard, I believe we're having a workshop, or it got changed from Monday to Wednesday now, uh, to go over that space.
Talking about joint ventures, how about the bridge? How's that coming along? That's a joint venture between both, how's that looking? What's, where, where is that right now?
Uh, haven't heard a peep on the bridge in the longest time, you know, I haven't been on both sides, you know, and it's the same taxpayer and its user, I really think it's, you know, let's let the city build it, you know, of course, I'd like to negotiate a few things out of there. You know, of course, I'd like to negotiate a few things out of there. But I, I think it's, it's, they already have the system up and running, you know? Why do we want to try to create a, a new wheel just for this one bridge? I think the debt service is going to be tremendous. You know, it's going to be like Columbia was, where, you know, it's a money loser for quite some time. Does the county need that? You know, there's other things. And I don't think you're going to create any new traffic in the short term. So whatever is going across Bridge One, Bridge Two, World Trade Bridge, depending on what it is, you know, just saying, okay, we're going to steal traffic from over there because it's convenient to come over here. So all of a sudden, the city revenues for their bridge system drops because they lose, let's just say they lose twenty-five percent to this new bridge. So they just lost twenty-five percent of revenue, or partners, they lost twelve and a half percent. But gain more debt service, and then we add debt service. So I don't see it as a win-win. You know, you want to look down the road fifty years, say, yeah, it's probably going to be a money generator. But can we withstand however many years it takes for that thing to be profitable? And then if it's not commercial, it may never be profitable. And, you know, when I was there in Washington, the last time, it's been many years now, you know, they had said, no, we're not going to allow it to be commercial. We, it needs to be commercial, I mean, not only for, for it to be viable, but I mean, I think Laredo needs another commercial bridge.
Of course.
And, you know, you're, you're starting to see all these energy plants, you're seeing a lot of stuff going on the coast. You know, United States now, you know, huge exporter of oil and gas products. Uh, so I think you'll start seeing a lot of stuff going eastbound. And so you'll see the Highway Fifty-nine or US Sixty-nine start to, to be going, you know, having more traffic and more traffic. And I think you'll start seeing this movement. So, you know, I like the Rio Bravo location there. I think it has the land to, you know, go in there, do it right, master plan it, a real master plan. Do it right, set it up, do your outer loop from there, connect all the way around, go in there and hit, hit, hit Three Fifty-nine, you hit, and you hit Fifty-nine and go on out. And then if you have to go north, you can go north. But like I said, it's, we're in a great place where we can plan it now. And whether it takes us another ten years from here, then fine, but let's, you know, let's agree on something. I would like to see that happen.
That'd be great. What else would you like to see? Let's, you know, let's take, let's take the campaign a little bit on the side, okay? And let's look on what you need, what you want to do to make sure that, that Webb County is going to be more, more stable, say, ten years from now. What would you like to say?
Well, we're always, you know, it's always about fiscal responsibility. And I think things are putting along, like I say, pretty good now. We, you know, get a little hiccup every once in a while, but, you know, like I say, things are very stable. And I'd like to see that. There's always upward pressure on, on salaries, you know? There's always a push for friends, relatives, compadres, whatever. And then, you know, you, you'll always get this testimony, oh, well, but they're doing this extra stuff. It's, you know, and it's very difficult to sit back there and say, all right, you know, I'm not aware of what you're doing on a day-to-day basis. But in generality, we can tell that, you know, that's really within your scope. It's nothing new, it's not an added thing. So, you know, it's trying to keep the pressure, I mean, the downward pressure or a neutral pressure on the salaries. Because there's always a push, you know, it's just a tendency to pay your friends and people more money. Hey, you know, they're just what it is. And like I say, I think the county pays very, very well, you know? Like I say, even my assistant, I don't think that my assistant can find a job anywhere else for the price that we pay. I, I would say that's probably true throughout most of the county. The only place that you would see, you know, competition is really in the law enforcement. Of course, you know, you're never going to be able to pay what Border Patrol or the federal government DEA and all them. So, you know, there's always pressure there, you know, that people jumping ship, you know, going, going for a better job. But, you know, it's also a lot tougher, there's exams, there's things that you can't pass, and, you know? So, you know, we're, we're trying to up it, make it a more stable environment for that. You know, we always have CBA agreements, collective bargaining, things like that. And we're trying to, you know, just putting vehicles out there. You know, we buy a vehicle for whatever it was, I mean, we're leasing them now, the pursuit vehicles and things. But it's thirty thousand dollars just to outfit the vehicle, radios, lights, all the other stuff that they need in there, you know, the computers and things like that. And unfortunately, they, those things really, except for the radios, you know, as they change, they have a life expectancy, maybe ten years. But the rest of the stuff is, you know, what, what, as we flip the car, that stuff's gone, you know? We have to buy all brand-new stuff, you can't just take it and put it on the next car. So unfortunately, you know, we're, we're, the outfitting those vehicles is very expensive. But like I said, we just, I think we're going to do another sixty cars, we did forty cars. So the sheriff's office is going to be brand-new fleet, all the, the constables, basically a new fleet, you know? So we've done all this and not raised any taxes. And we went through a bad year where we were eight million dollars short and didn't raise any taxes. So that's why I was saying, I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. And I see going forward, you know, I would like to see that downward pressure on, on the tax rate, you know, slowly. Maybe get it down into the thirties here real quick. We're at Forty-one, two, I think. And, but like I said, there's always so much demand. And as the city grows, you know, the demand grows, you know? There's pressure for another, another court, you know, and with all that goes, all this other, you know, the, the commitments to go on the side of it, you know? DEA's office, the public defender's office, district clerk's office, the county clerk's office, they all have a part in those courtrooms. And then the sheriff's office, who has protection and, you know, the deputies and stuff like that. And, and so, you know, it's a big thing now. You know, we don't have any control over the courts, but we'd like to see some specialty courts.
We're talking about courts. Do you see them opening in the near future or how, what's the time span that you're going to see another court opening up?
Well, that would have to be through the legislature, obviously. But there is pressure, there's that, you know, there's been pressure over there asking for that. And like I said, but if you go to other cities, what you have is, is a specialty court. Now, here, all, all, every single judge and district court practices all the types of laws. So criminal law, family law, civil law, you know, whatever it may be. And so, like, you go to Austin, you know, and you go to somebody, you have a criminal thing, you only go to, it's all he does criminal. So it really helps with the DEA's office and the clerk's office and things like that. Because that same DA, the, the assistant DA or whoever it may be, doesn't have to be in three courtrooms or four courtrooms at one time, because he could possibly have court dates in all of them, you know?
Absolutely.
Because the cases could pop up in different places. So he knows he's only stuck in one courtroom, boom, boom, boom.
It's a lot easier to maintain and manage.
And then we have, each court has court coordinators, or you have a family court coordinator, civil court coordinator, you know?
Absolutely.
And criminal, and so on and on. It would really be a reduction in force and, and a streamlining of the system. You know, that's not always favorable thing, you know, again, with the way politics being what it is.
Absolutely. And what kind of courts would, would you see? Would it be another district court, another county court?
There's pressure for another district court and another county court, yeah.
Do you see more, more JP courts opening up, dividing precincts up?
Well, the only one that's not divided is, is here in Precinct Four. And, you know, they've talked about splitting that. And, you know, I don't know if we need it. Again, then you're talking about another, another building.
Absolutely.
And staff now. We, we could still, you know, split the staff that's there, but then you, you still, okay, you've got your office administrator and then you've got your, you know, whatever, I don't know all the titles. But your, your top people, we would probably have to duplicate for the new court, because you only got one of them and each, you know, over here. So again, there's always, there's that upward pressure in salaries, you know? And, and personnel. And so personnel is, you know, our biggest budget. We're a hundred and six million dollars and we're probably eighty, I think eighty-six of that is payroll. You know, the rest is, there's very little in operations.
The overhead's the one that's...
Well, it's, like I say, it's payroll.
Yeah, payroll.
And with payroll comes healthcare.
You're absolutely correct. So I guess a main one would be lifetimes, no, porita?
Um, like I say, that's going to come up in the near future. Like I say, we're going to see, we'll vote on how big the package is going to be, how much of the buildings that we can afford to build. Like I say, I am very nervous about next year's income. So I wouldn't want to put the taxpayer, and, and really, I don't know how we would do it. Because I'm not exactly sure of the new law as the way it's going to be. Because from what I'm understanding, if, let's just say, we float a bond series. Now, the bond series says, you pay us first, right? So, so we float a bond series and we're tight, let's just say we're going to be short a million. Uh, we're going to pay the bond series first, so that means personnel's going to go. You know, and so like I said, there's, you know, the demand for services doesn't stop. You know, it's, can we perform those duties, you know, more efficiently to, with the same amount of personnel? And I think we proved that we could, you know, when we went through that, that belt tightening and that, that down here. We, we had a bunch of vacant positions, we just zeroed them out and you can't replace them. So we, we stayed with less personnel doing the same amount of work and really, we didn't miss a beat. And I think we'll continue to do that. And like I said, it's just, it's just a matter of trying to keep that stability there, keep the focus on, you know, you can't just run numbers because you're providing a service. So you have to provide the service first, but you can back that service up with numbers, saying, all right, can we always do this more efficiently? Because if you're just going to say, we're going to do the service and we don't care what it costs, that, that's not right either. Because remember, this is all taxpayer money.
Absolutely.
And so we have to be cognizant, and like I say, it's very easy to spend our money, I mean, their money, you know? So like, if it came out of your pocket, you'd think twice about spending it. So that's what, you know, I asked my colleagues to do, would you spend this if it was your own, your own stuff? You know, obviously, there's some things you will spend on, you know, depending on what you like. But like I say, in general, to provide that service, what would we, how can we do it most efficiently and still provide the good service?
Absolutely. Number one, oh, you know, the, the thing is that the county has seen a lot of different faces. It's gotten to a lot of different movements. In the last couple of years, it's kind of like everybody's kind of moving in unison, you know? Kind of in one unit. And that's what I see with this court.
Yeah, I think it's...
And I think everybody's thinking, okay, one way. Everybody else was at first, you know, several years ago, everybody was all over the place. I'm not talking about the pre, this administration, I'm talking about previous administration. And that's, 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 that's the difference that I see. And I think people now are just looking at it and trying to be a little bit more, I wouldn't say conservative, but a little bit more understanding about, that's what you're saying. It's not my money, it's the taxpayers' money. And that's something that we've never heard before.
Yeah, and, you know, I just gave a speech at one of the Rotary Clubs and, you know, I called it my Halloween speech because I gave them all the down and dirty about what I've seen coming through, you know, in my tenure. And I said, one of my very first meetings, and I don't remember if I mentioned this last time, I don't think I did, was I was asked to sit in on, on, our time clock, you know? Creating a time clock for the, for the county, a punch system, go in there. Because before, we had the computer system that was abused, because all you needed is somebody's number and you could just punch in, go in. And then a lot of people weren't on it. And so I sat in on the meeting and they're talking, and Sheriff Martin was the one who initiated it for, he wanted to pay it for his staff. And it wasn't moving. It was just sat there. And I said, it's been going on for over two years, they've been having these meetings. So I got there and I sit down there and we started, you know, we started doing all the discussion. I said, well, bring me up to speed, what's going on? I said, well, we have this contract with, I don't remember who it was, X, Y, Z Corporation. They're going to develop the software for us. I think it was a million-dollar contract. And I said, okay, that seems kind of strange, but here it is. And they have this, I don't remember what it is, like a hundred-page questionnaire, what we wanted, you know? And they were at an impasse, because somebody from the auditor's office kept requesting that, saying, well, we want this policy. And I said, but that policy doesn't exist, you know? You may want it, but only commissioner's court can create the policy. So if they haven't created a policy, let's go with what exists and move on, you know, get it going. In the meantime, I'll look into what we can do about this. And I got to the second meeting and I was just like, boy, this is crazy. You know, I went on the, online, I said, you know, factories across the United States, school systems, everybody's got, you know, these biometric, you know, punch cards, you know, a system of entry or logging in. And lo and behold, I found this thing, it's called Time Clock Plus. So I started reading and said, oh, it's just, you know, a bunch of buttons, you just, you know, radio buttons. You go in there and has a big questionnaire inside, you just click the buttons, what do you want to do? You know, time offer this, how do you do, how do you allocate for your vacation time? How do you allocate sick leave? Just a long, very, you know, complicated but detailed questionnaire. And then they said, on top of that, we'll provide, if you need specialized software, we can include it at an extra price. Twenty-five thousand dollars off the shelf.
Yeah, the company wanted a million.
No, we'd already paid them a million. So I go into the meeting and I say, okay, guys, can we, I'm sorry, I think we paid three hundred thousand of that million. And I said, can we cancel this contract? And I remember looking at Ray and goes, yeah. But he said, you need to do it pretty quickly, because we have another maintenance agreement paying, payment coming up of sixty-nine thousand. I said, what are you talking about? I said, we don't even have the software. He said, yeah, well, we paid a maintenance agreement for two years, sixty-nine thousand dollars each. I said, this is crazy, you're paying the maintenance agreement on software that you don't even have? You know, that's the kind of stuff that was going on, it was just crazy. So for a hundred grand, because it was, the clock was twenty-five grand, and then you have to buy all the, the hand things, the biometric, so it reads your fingerprints, like I said, it's, it's excellent records of your, of, you know, your time off. So it actually helps the employee, you know, make sure that he's getting all his, his accredited hours, you know, counts for holidays, you know, all those type of things is calculated in there. And then in there, you can go in and change it, but it records who's making the change. So there's, you know, there's, there's a paper trail going in there, okay? Uh, you know, because you always get people out, forgot to punch out. Okay, well, so we see, okay, who, who went in there, logged in and punched you out at twelve, made the, made the correction. So if anybody's time clock is, you know, punch card is messed with, we can see who actually did it.
That's, that's good, that's, you know, that's, that's the kind of thinking. You see, that's, how can I put it? People that have, that have paid salaries on their own are the ones that think of this. People that have never paid salaries and get elected to certain positions, well, they don't, they have no clue of what's going on.
Yes, well, you pay nine forty-one taxes and the IRS comes out and says, okay, you, you took this deduction, you better make sure you give it to the IRS, because they will come after you and harp me for that. Like I say, that, you know, I always joke with you, but then that, that should be a prerequisite, because you've got to understand what it costs to make sure that your employees are paid, you know, before you get paid yourself.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're absolutely, you're absolutely correct. And when you have, and that's what I was looking, when you say, you have a candidate, and the candidate comes, comes in and says, well, I have so much experience. And you have a candidate over here that has, has had his own businesses, has run his own businesses, they've been successful. Sometimes you have downfalls, but that's just part of life. And he knows how to deal with employees, he knows how to deal with management, he's already doing that. Understand what I'm saying, that he has the experience. Then you start outweighing, what, what were you, oh, so I used to work, you know, whatever. I mean, I'm not making fun of anybody's location, but you know what? I'm going to go with somebody that's had that experience, especially for these type of positions in government.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, and then we, we went over that whole race thing and, you know, it was not for that, I didn't think. And, you know, you're supposed to do this because you want to serve. It's, you know, they call us politicians or, you know, some of them, some people are and some people aren't. I'm not a very good politician. I'm a public servant. I do this because I want to help, I do this because I see these problems and trying to fix these problems as we go along, you know? And then it takes negotiating, it takes, you know, compromise, it takes all these things. You don't always get, you know, like I said, with, with the contract, I didn't want to pay a percent, you know? But I, I could, I'll live with it, you know, because it's better paying ten percent. You know, because that's what we were going to get, you know? So just these things, you know, you've got to go out there. And I said, when you raise these salaries to a point, you're just... And I said, when you raise these salaries to a point, you're just encouraging people to run for a salary, not run for, to do the work. Actually, I started from the city council, and the first time, we got 500 bucks a month. And there was no reimbursement of anything, you know? And they, you just see these pressures on these things going up, you know? The only one I remember, I, I agreed to, to raise the mayor's, because, you know, she was traveling all the time, and, you know? That's the mayor's job. The mayor's job is supposed to be the...
The ambassador.
The ambassador, going out there and, you know, especially Washington, Austin, and doing those things, and, you know, maybe in Mexico, or whatever it is, so, you know, partners coming through here. But there's a lot of travel involved, a lot of time away from your, from your family and things like that. So I, I didn't have a problem with that. But as council members, you know, we didn't have an office, we didn't have a secretary, we didn't have anything, and you didn't really need one, you know? And here, at Commissioner's Court, like I said, we've got, you know, all, everything that we need. I don't think we need to have a much bigger salary. Now, again, we're not like, you know, judges are supposed to be there every day, or the district attorney, or the, you know, somebody that's gotta show up every day. This is basically a part-time job, you know? But you're on the phone 24 hours, I mean, you're, you're available for constituents' calls. But, you know, going in there and working on things, reading over contracts, you know, you don't have to be in your office to read over a contract, make changes, edit, do all these things, you know, make, make suggestions and all these things. So we, a lot of phone discussion.
Absolutely. And you were taken out of content by certain media.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was not a fun moment for me. And, and then, you know, when I complained about it, they asked me, okay, well, come in and do an interview. And, you know, I started saying, I was, we were talking about being competitive for our employees. We're doing the market study for our salaries to be competitive for our employees, not for public officials. Then they go cut it, and I said, you know, and I said, especially not for public officials. And they cut it out, they said, we're being competitive. You know, we wanna be competitive in the market. And then they put, you know, they, they, they put, they, and Jerry's origin, whoever's origin was, said, for public officials. I said, no, I never said that. And I still don't, you know, never before that, and so at least that's blown over his con. Like I said, didn't pass, I think that, that was the right thing to do.
Well, I wanna thank you again for standing up, and you're doing it again.
Yes.
Good luck in your, on the campaign. And you have, you have one opponent.
Yes, I have one opponent.
And he seems like a nice gentleman. And I think next year, I think the fruits of your labor are coming forth. So now I think you're gonna be, now you have, how can I say? You have a hawk's eye on, on lifedowns, and I think you're gonna be the one that's gonna say, you know what, I don't like this, and I think, that's gonna get done right. You know what I'm saying?
I'll say it, like I say, I don't know if I'll win that battle, but, you know, I'm looking out for the public's best interest. I wanna get the biggest bang for the buck. But I don't wanna put the taxpayer...
A burden.
Well, I don't want that burden because of next year. Like I say, if, you know, we need to do it in phases because of the uncertainty of next year.
Absolutely.
Of the tax rates, and, you know, the way that, that new law's gonna come down. I think that law's probably gonna get, come back to bite them. I think you're gonna see a lot of counties in disarray, and this thing is, is probably gonna be altered or changed within the next two to four years. And, like I say, I think they, they had a good idea, they went about it wrong, and we, we went, tried to give them some input, and, you know, they, they just had their idea, except the way they were gonna do it.
Absolutely.
Anyway, thank you so much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry it took so long to coordinate it, but...
Well, we'll get it, nothing's happened. We'll do it again, and it'll keep us informed.
Yeah, like I said, they do keep me busy.
Oh, for sure. Folks, until next time, peace.
Thank you, God bless.